We're at the meeting. If we're close enough. So, we already had our executive session and convened a regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission for Wednesday, July 1st, 2015, at 7:00. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg is absent this evening, and Mayor Holliday?
Here. So if you'll join me in flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought we had something under ceremonies, proclamations, and presentations, but it's not on my agenda.
Oh, I apologize. There is. It's Oregon Impact.
So, the folks from Oregon Impact will come up and introduce yourselves.
Well, thank you so much for making time for us today. My name is Janelle Lawrence, and I'm the Executive Director of Oregon Impact.
I'm Suze Moss, and I'm the Community Education Coordinator and the Driver Education Program Manager for the Oregon City School District.
So, we're here today because we started working on a project that's taken on a little bit of a life of its own, that's grown really fast, and we wanted to make sure you were all on board with us and kind of let you know what we were up to. So, we've got a higher point.
They reversed these for some reason in our new situation.
So, in the last nine months, we've lost five of our students from Westland High School and one from Oregon City High School in driving crashes. And the first one was in Westland and involved Maddie and Hayden. And Maddie's family wanted to do something to remember her by, and she was a state softball player, and she always wore the number five. So, we started working on a project and wrote a grant to do something for Maddie and involve the number five. Well, six months later, we lost four kids in two days. And so, the number five took on a very different meaning. It was five of our kids. So, I'm going to show you a little bit about Maddie.
Roll. Is this audio getting fed to Renee, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Falling in and out of love, ashamed and proud of together all the while. You can never say never, why we don't know it, time and time again. Younger now than we were before. Don't let me go, don't let me go, don't let me go. Don't let me go, don't let me go, don't let me go. Picture, you're the queen of everything, far as the eye can see, under your command. I will be your guardian when all is crumbling, steady your hand. You can never say never, why we don't know it, time and time and time again. Younger now than we were before. Don't let me go, don't let me go, don't let me go. Don't let me go, don't let me go, don't let me go. We're falling apart, and coming together again and again. We're falling apart, but we're pulling together, pulling together, together again.
the two other boys, Cooper and Antonio, that lost their lives the day after. So, we switched our focus from Maddie to the five of them. So, the campaign's called Angel Five for Westland and Oregon City, so that we don't forget this. It's pretty horrific, losing one child a season, but five, we haven't had this experience before. So, we've passed out thousands of these shirts to the kids that knew these kids, so they wouldn't forget. They've got a hashtag with driving tips on the back, if you go to that. So, we've got some for you, so you have them as well. So, when we started this, it sort of took on a little bit of a life of its own. We started getting calls from businesses saying, "How do I make a donation? How do I help? How do we make sure this doesn't happen again in our community?" So, we've been kind of collecting partners and visiting with a lot of people, and we're going to make sure this campaign stays in front of kids as we go forward into the school year. And part of that was being able to do some events at Oregon City High School, which we hadn't been able to do previously. So, we are doing a program in October called Celebrate My Drive. State Farm Foundation puts it on every year, and its mission is to do two things, have kids keep two eyes on the road and two hands on the wheel, and that's it. We don't know exactly the parameters of what that'll be this year. In the past, it's been a social media campaign where you go on every day and vote for the school of your choice, and they've given out $10,000,000, $100,000 grants to schools and $90,000, $25,000 grants to schools. So, that's what it's been in the past, but we're going to ask Oregon City to back up these kids and ask all of us to help them reach that goal and know that we care. And I hope if you see any kids out in these shirts, you'll stop them and let them know that you do care about their driving and that they're important to you, too. So, those are some of the partners we're starting with, and we added the Oregon City Chamber today and the Oregon City Police Department today. So, we have some appointments next week, but we hope to just gather everybody we can to make sure that kids know how important they are and how safe driving can help.
Coats?
Thank you. I knew Maddie West very well, and it was hard to watch that again. I think that, you know, this has definitely been an issue at Oregon City High School and all schools for some time, not only just with drinking, but texting and all the other things that students are doing behind the wheel now. And I think it definitely impacted these two communities this year more than it has in a long, long time. And to see the two communities come together, especially at the vigil that we had at Clackamas Park, and the mayor and the police chief were there, the city, you know, that was a pretty incredible event, moving, very moving, and I'm glad to see that that's kind of spun into a focus that I think some people in this community were talking about, you know, prior to this year, and how to start dealing with this issue at the schools. So, I think, you know, for me, I'm more than willing to help in any way at the city level or the school level to make sure that this gets out there in the community. I would assume that the rest of the commission would feel the same way.
Absolutely.
But we'd also like to make this year-long a sustaining program of education, so the funds that can come in, this Celebrate My Drive, we could, our school could win up to $100,000, and I know if any community can do it, I know we can. And there are so many families that can't afford driver ed. The only scholarships that I'm able to give to families is through the Free Reduced Lunch, which the state legislature passed that law last spring. So, if we can have enough money to help families, because driver education class is about creating safe behaviors in the car. And if we could just have a year-long education, not just react to these traumatic and great losses, but to make it proactive, because this is our future that...
So, if I could, I think number one is that it'd be great if we could get DMV involved, and every time you hand a new license to a kid, they get a shirt, you know? But that may not happen. But anyway, Rocky and I belong to the Optimus Club here in Oregon City, and I would encourage you to get ahold of us and do a program, and I'm sure there'll be some financial arrangements for you there. So, we do citizenship programs and youth appreciation programs for the younger kids and the citizenship programs for the high school kids. So, we would encourage you to make contact here and we'll get you squared away.
We'll get you.
Don't forget about the Rotary Club.
Rotary's great.
I planned on that, too.
Hey, you guys can stop fighting now.
Well, everybody's following in line.
Exactly.
To help with this. My brother was killed in a car accident when I was 21.
Yeah.
So, I lived through that, and I wish there was an app on this thing that when you get up to a certain speed, it just shuts it off. That's what I wish. I think that would make a bigger, it would probably make a bigger impact if I might use your title there than all the shirts we could come up with, you know?
Wouldn't be so sure that there isn't an app for that.
There might be. And when my little one gets old enough to get behind the wheel, she's going to have one of those apps. I hope.
Hi, I want to thank you for all your work that you do and all the organizations listed. And hopefully, with enough outreach and education, we can prevent this from happening and really let people know how important it is to pay attention when you drive and prevent these things. Thank you.
So, I have the final say, and that is, when I was a junior in high school, my best friend and his girlfriend were killed in a car accident, very similar to that. And so, it always strikes me really close to home when that happens. I think during my four years of high school, we lost at least one kid a year at the high school through something, not necessarily, you know, a drunk driving accident or something like that. So, this is all, you know, extremely important to us, and we thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you for your support. We'll be back in October and let you know how you can support the high school and vote for Oregon City High School.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, the switches are reversed now for whatever reason.
They are?
Yes.
Oh, interesting. Just to keep us on our toes.
So, Jamie, when you get a chance, you want to fix these stickers up here, because they're reversed now.
We need new stickers. They're peeling off anyway.
Yeah.
We just cut them in half.
I think we can afford four new stickers.
New monitors, too.
What the heck's going on? Are we got mouse?
Oh, this is the new agenda. Okay. So, now is the time for citizen comments. citizens throw out a three-minute presentation of information relevant to the city, but not unless it is on the agenda. Is there anybody on the list? Anybody in the audience? Then we'll move on. Everybody happy with the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. General business, 15-395, ordinance for introduction 15-1008, amending the Oregon City Municipal Code Title 9.12, offenses against public peace and decency, and amending Chapter 1.16, general penalty and declaring an emergency. And sitting in for chief ban is Captain Greg Fred.
Hello.
Hello. I thought you didn't like to speak.
I don't. But I came, and Katie says she's going to punch me if I screw up. So, the reason that we're here, there was, as you know, that I came in here and introduced the new disturbing the peace ordinance that I wanted to propose. And after it became law, we realized that there was a couple of mistakes and a couple of things that we want to add and correct. So, when I, one of the mistakes is the numbering of the disturbing the peace. When I introduced the number, I didn't realize that the number was assigned for drinking in public. So, we repealed. I asked that drinking in public be repealed by accident, and then we enacted the disturbing the peace. So, I'm back asking that we re-adopt City Code Drinking in Public 9.12.010. And the second mistake was the penalty. The penalty didn't change. We wanted to make it a violation or an infraction and not a crime, and that wasn't changed in the new, when we adopted or enacted the new ordinance. So, I'm asking that the penalty be amended on 1.16.010 to be for civil infraction and not a misdemeanor crime. Some of the other changes were changing the word violation to civil infraction for the authority and the enforcement. And then, for the penalty piece, 9.12.027 was removing 1.16 entirely, and that was the portion that talks about misdemeanor versus the infraction or the violation. So, I ask that these changes be adopted and made and reenact 9.12.020, disturbing the peace.
Mr. Geisman?
I think Captain Fred has done a good job of explaining it. The one thing I would add is that we're asking that they've done on an emergency basis, which would require two readings, given this upcoming weekend has a potential for noise ordinance violations.
Loud and raucous behavior.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve the first reading of 15-395, ordinance for introduction 15-1008, amending Oregon City Municipal Code Title 9.12, offenses against public peace and decency, and amending Chapter 1.16, general penalty and declaring an emergency.
My second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Polly. Mr. Geisman?
Ordinance number 15-1008, an ordinance amending Oregon City Municipal Code Title 9.12, offenses against public peace and decency, amending Chapter 1.16, general penalty and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So, I would entertain a motion for the second reading and final enactment and declaring an emergency. So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Polly. Mr. Geisman?
Ordinance number 15-1008, an ordinance amending Oregon City Municipal Code Title 9.12, offenses against public peace and decency, amending Chapter 1.16, general penalty and declaring an emergency.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So, does that mean it takes effect immediately, or is there a time period?
It, I believe it takes effect immediately. Let me check and make sure. No, it takes effect on July 1st, which is today, so yeah, immediate.
Okay. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
No.
Then I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So, with that, we're down to communications. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind the commission and the public that the July 7th work session of the city commission has been canceled. And also, city hall offices will be closed on July 3rd, Friday, in observance of the holiday on July 4th. That closure also includes the Pioneer Center. But the pool, because they're normally closed on Saturday, they will be open on Saturday to the, I'm sorry.
Friday.
The pool is open July 3rd, but it will be closed on July 4th. So, also, last week, we had a hearing on the Tri-City Right-of-Way lawsuit that the county filed against the city of Oregon City, and it was a hearing in front of Judge Breithart, which is a circuit court judge. Both sides made their oral arguments to the judge, and we're expecting some sort of a decision within probably a week or so, maybe a little less. One of the questions, I thought the judge was very well-prepared. I think both of the attorneys, ours and theirs, were well-prepared. The judge asked them some tough questions and asked us questions, and I thought he showed a lot of neutrality and also a lot of knowledge of the law as it applied to the case, and so, we should know soon about what that looks like. One of the questions he asked them, which I thought was thought-provoking, he said, "Are you sure, have you thought about what it would be like in your world if you actually win this case? Are you sure you want to win?" And that's not a question you get asked very often when you're an attorney, so there's a little bit of pause, puzzlement, and the attorney said, "Well, of course, we want to win." And well, the judge said, "I asked this because if I rule for you that you're tax-exempt and you leave your stuff in there right-of-way, they can simply tell you to take your stuff out of the right-of-way." To which the county attorney said, "Well, that would be a really tough political question." And the judge said, "But I don't deal with politics." So, it's, you know, I just think sometimes these lawsuits, you know, they seem like a good idea, I'm sure, when they decided to file it, but it was interesting. And then, so I want to move on a little bit from that. Are there any questions about that hearing? Any of you have questions? Nancy Warner was our attorney, and Bill came out as part of our cheerleading section. They still had more attorneys there than we did, but if you count me and Bill, we were close to the number of attorneys that they had. But we're looking forward to having some kind of resolution there. And of course, there's appeals. If we aren't the prevailing party, we have so much at stake, then appeal is probably going to be mandatory for us, but with the county, I think it's sort of optional. I think the lawsuit was optional, and that'll be a decision that they have to make. Then also, there were a couple of articles in the Oregon, or the League of Oregon City's newspaper that, or magazine, that I thought were really interesting that highlighted Oregon City, and one of them has a big spread in here about the falls, and there's a picture of the mayor with the governor and lots of good things in there about our project, and it just was a really nice representation in the magazine. I know all of my colleagues, pretty much across the state and other city manager offices, read this magazine and look through it every month, so it's nice to be featured in there. And also, in the magazine, in the front, is an article by the director entitled "Home Rule: Part of Oregon's Heritage and Future." And then, the quote from Mike McCully, the executive director, says, "The government closest to the people should have the authority to be the most responsive to the people." And then, I read that, and then today, I saw in the newspaper an article by a gentleman named Michael Reed, proposes to have written this, and it says, "We need tri-city sewer issue resolved, not escalated." And unfortunately, Mr. Reed, whom I've met, I was surprised to see this letter, because he hadn't actually called me to talk about any of these contents. But I would say that it probably does need to be resolved, and you and your predecessors, Mr. Neely and commissioners, all the way back to Commissioner Jimacy, to talk to me about the tri-city problems a week after I started working here. And so, it's not, don't feel, we're not the first ones to figure out that there could be improvements. And I agree that it needs to be resolved, but sometimes you can't resolve things if they're being ignored. And you know you directed staff to write letters to the county commissioners before House Bill 2800 was proposed, and Mayor Neely signed those letters before you were sworn in, and there was no response. So, ignoring a problem doesn't make it go away, and it seems like the longer we ask tough questions, the more they just ask us, "Stop asking questions." So, there were a couple of very clear factual errors in this letter that I just want to clear up, and I know I'm going to miss some, so this is in no way a comprehensive, because the errors in this letter are extensive. But I would start by saying, when you get down toward the bottom of this letter, it says, "City staff and elected officials began a campaign to discredit Clackamas County and Water Environment Services, which operates TCSD."
In other words, we read and listen?
Well, it's frustrating, because I'm on the Tri-City Advisory Committee, have been for five years, asking these questions, not getting answers, and I don't really think it's this city staff. I mean, I'd love to take credit for exposing the Kenzie matter, but frankly, the Oregonian's reporter did that, and we started asking questions, because we didn't know as an advisory committee that the executive director of the district had broken the law and encumbered a million dollars' worth of liabilities. And I'm on the committee, the advisory committee, that's supposed to know these things about the operations. Huge impact to the districts, huge impact to their budgets, and there was no mention of it. I read about it for the first time in the newspaper. They also say that the city's right-of-way fee, which we just talked about, and we'll hopefully have some answers from the court soon on that, is more than $200,000 a year, but it's actually $191,000?
Okay, Paul.
Yeah, it's close. It doesn't say how much more than 200, so maybe they mean 201, I don't know. They also mentioned here that the, that the city has, to this day, the cities enjoy some of the lowest sewer rates in the metropolitan region, but they don't mention that the average rate increase for the last five years has been 10%, two and three times the rate of inflation. In one year, it was 13% rate hike, and inflation that year was zero. That was the peak of the recession. They also say that the voters approved the original concept, which they did. But interestingly enough, shortly after the voters approved the initial concept for the district to be run by the county, the county then undertook a series over the next several years of imposing changes to the IGAs that run the districts, how they operate, their bylaws, their policies, and none of those amendments to the IGAs, and each one of those subsequent amendments, and there were many, each one of those further eroded accountability and the city's ability to have a voice. And by that, I mean a meaningful voice in how the district is operated. They never went back to the public to amend those, and that thing has been amended so many times that today, it doesn't really even resemble the thing that voters originally approved way back when. They don't mention that. And then, probably one of the more egregious ones, it says the city has, and this is a matter of opinion, it says the city imposes an onerous right-of-way fee on the district, and like it's a novel concept. But there are only 35 other cities that we know of that impose similar fees across the state, and in fact, it wasn't last month that this was the title of the League of Oregon City's magazine. Entire magazine was dedicated to how cities should properly manage their rights of way. And the ordinance that we used that was so onerous is the League of Oregon City's model ordinance. That's the one that we have in place that this commission adopted. So, it's not a new thing. one that we have in place that this commission adopted. So, it's not a new thing. Um, and next, they say that the revenue, quote, "From the right-of-way fee goes into the city's general fund coffers to be used for whatever purpose the city deems appropriate." Well, if Mr. Reed had called me, I would have been happy to share with him, maybe he didn't know about Resolution Number fourteen zero five entitled, "A Resolution Expending Right-of-Way Fees to Benefit the City's Wastewater Collection System and the Tri-City Sewer Service District," and it requires all of the right-of-way fees collected from the district to be expended on, quote, "Maintenance improvements to the city's wastewater collection system within the city's rights of way that directly, or indirectly benefit the Tri-City Sewer District," signed by Mayor Neely, second day of April twenty-fourteen. Here's a copy of that. So, these are just some of the, and it, I'm not talking about the things that have been published far and wide about the mismanagement of the district, which is pretty obvious. Um, and then when we get over on the backside, I get, I get a personal feature here. It says, "The city manager, David Frazier, claimed the county was trying to interfere with the city's home rule authority." Well, besides being backed up by the, uh, Director of the League of Oregon Cities on that, we're going to find out in a few days whether a judge agrees with that or not, but we don't really have to wait that long, because, in Phoenix versus Rogue Valley Sewer ca, uh, that, that case, the Oregon Court of Appeals decided unanimously that cities do have the home rule authority to regulate the right-of-way.
When did that decision come down?
Uh, it was about a year ago. It was about a year ago, and it's...
I thought, I thought there was still something pending.
Well, there is. So, that was the Oregon Court of Appeals, and then the Rogue Valley Sewer District appealed to the Supreme Court of Oregon, and those oral arguments have been taken already. And so, probably within the next several months, we'll have a decision on, on Phoenix.
Supreme Court tends to operate a little more slowly, so, yeah, I, I would say six months at the earliest.
So, you know, that's, uh, but anyway, I, I, I don't remember actually expressly saying that I believe that they're interfering with the city's home rule authority, but I'll say it now, I believe they're trying to interfere with the city's home rule authority, and I think that's, that's what the, the commission has said, that's what our attorneys have said. South Fork Water Board commissioned an independent review by a, an attorney and got an opinion from them, and that opinion was the same, that this is, the city's, within the city's home rule authority to have these programs. So, if it turns out to be a surprise to us, we will be in there with Eugene and Salem and Portland and all, many, many other cities that have, uh, robust right-of-way programs, and we'll all be shocked together, at least. Um, and then, um, finally, I think it's important to mention that the city didn't challenge its own home rule authority. It didn't initiate a lawsuit against itself. The county did that. Using Tri-City Ratepayer Funds to initiate and maintain a lawsuit that cost this community tens of thousands of dollars, and probably at least that much in staff time from the county, but at least based on the number of attorneys I've seen involved in it, uh, what, for what more and more it looks to me like a frivolous political tactic, rather than a good-faith difference opinion about the law. So, anyway, that's my take on the article, and it's unfortunate. We did put a call into Michael today, Mr. Reed. He works for a sewer district in Oak Lodge. I don't know if he's a resident, but he, the article does talk and hear extensively about his credentials and his resume, and I can assure the commission, if I write a letter, uh, to another city or another government, uh, about something unrelated to the city of Oregon City, you won't see my credentials at the bottom of it. And if I do, I have a feeling you'll be talking to me about, about that protocol. Um, so that said, I think that concludes my reports. Want to check here? Yeah, that's all I have.
Commissioner Shaw?
Let's see, visited the, uh, Kanema Neighborhood Association meeting, uh, went to the Lewis and Clark Bank groundbreaking, on behalf of the mayor, I believe.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And, um, also, uh, broke the ribbon at the pickleball court up there and stuff. I didn't play.
Did you get to play around a pickleball?
Didn't play. It looked a little, they were a little more seasoned individuals up there than...
[laughing]
And I knew there was plenty of cameras rolling up there, so it would have been fun. Um, then went to the, uh, Newell Creek, uh, presentation that Metro put on. They're, uh, asking for input on how the trail system's going to be up there, and, um, and Commissioner Meldenberg was there too, so. Um, and then, let's see, uh, you know, last meeting, we had the scouts here, and I think my last question was, uh, any questions from those folks? Well, three days later, I got a call from scoutmaster and say, "Can you come up and talk to us?" I went up there the other night and spent a little time with them and talked about, uh, how they need to volunteer, and, and that's how you get to these positions, so. And then went to Prac, uh, the other night, where they, we came to a decision on, uh, playground equipment and, uh, place surface for the new library, so.
Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee?
Yes.
For those who aren't on.
Yeah, yeah, so that's it, yeah.
Wow.
Mr. Polly?
Well, I was trying to remember the name of, uh, maybe, uh, you can help me a little bit. I went to the Clackamas Cities Dinner, um, it was, um, held in Happy Valley, along with Commissioner Manglebird and City Manager, uh, David Frazier, and it was at Pandarvis Farm, and it was for the, was it the Pickathon?
Pickathon, yes.
Oh, that's right, okay. So, they have a festival that they hold every year, and, um, a music festival, and it was a very good example of a city, not necessarily sponsoring, but really helping and working, um, together with a festival to bring people from all over. And, did they say thirty-five thousand went to the, over the, over four days?
Mm-hmm.
Three days? Um, and it's grown, and it's getting national recognition. So, it was really neat to see how they worked with the local land owner to get that, um, up and going and, uh, develop tourism to, to Happy Valley. So, that was, that was good. And that's all I have.
Did they play?
They, they did. They actually, um, there was a PowerPoint, and they showed some example of, um, different musicians, and they have five stages, and there's different bands playing at any one given point in time. And the thing that was really interesting is they said they have around a thousand kids, and so, um, the parents kind of helped police the whole situation. So, it's a family event. Um, it sounds much tamer than other festivals, and so I think it probably suits Happy Valley well. So, it, it sounds interesting.
They did a nice job, too, hosting us. They were very gracious.
Yeah.
They did a great job.
Happy Valley did, yeah.
Good, good.
It's neat to see what other cities are doing and help support them.
You got a big list there, Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, a lot of stuff.
You got, you got three minutes.
Okay, uh, give me a, a little, do I have a little family?
No, I was just kidding.
Good, because I wasn't gonna do it.
[laughing]
I, I wanted to start off with, um, you know, talking about the, the process that we just went through, I think, um, was incredible for appointing our new city commissioner. Um, and I feel so good about that. I, um, with the Fourth of July holiday coming up as well, um, how important it is to be involved in public service. Um, I've been a public employee my whole life, um, and it's been something that has, um, been kind of embedded in my family, is, is, is working, um, in the public sector and being committed to the community and, and really working for that. Um, to get people, the list of people that we had to do that, I, I think was amazing. Um, and, um, you know, so many times, we have elections where we don't have a lot of choice on who's on the ballot, and sometimes we, we have...
That'd be nice, once.
Yeah. And, you know, I think part of that is, um, the amount of work and the amount of commitment and the amount of sacrifice that it takes to do that. It's enormous. And it's not something that you can really describe to anyone unless they're, they've done it. Um, one of the things that really hit me this week with that is, for generations, and even in the last decade, people have elected, been elected to public service, public positions from the LGBT community, with not even just the basic civil rights. You can get elected to a public office, you can hold a public office, but you couldn't get married across this country until this week. That's unbelievable, and I'm so happy to see the changes that have been made, um, across this country and this community, and, um, I, I just couldn't let today go without saying that. Um, I have been out of town. Um, I heard that news in, in Orlando, Florida. Um, I started, um, after school was out, um, I was in, um, actually, part of the last week of school, I was in California, um, with the ACE, at the ACE, um, Conference, which is the American Waterworks Association National Conference, um, with John Collins from, uh, South Fork Water. Um, you look at this, um, the front page of the League of Oregon Cities, drought in Oregon. Um, so, the conference in California, you know, they're dealing with the same thing, maybe even a little bit more than, than Oregon is, Washington as well. Um, that was a big topic. Um, so, every year, there's a national conference that representatives from all over the United States go to to talk about these issues. Um, there's, um, an exhibit hall, there's, there's classes throughout the whole week, lots of amazing training. I've been through the public officials trainings that they've done already. Um, and that was one of the things that was really important, kind of, when you're first elected, is to go through that, it's, especially if you're sitting on the water board, but even if you're not, you shouldn't, should go through that process, um, to understand all the issues that the communities are dealing with water, and it's getting to be a major issue. Um, so the drought was a big part of it, how to prepare for that, how to deal with that. Oregon City and West Lynn is, you know, fairly in a, you know, good situation. Our water rights are most senior, and, and, and we've done a lot of work with water conservation and, and, um, but, you know, it, it, as, as good as we have it right now, it's still going to be an issue. Um, some of the other issues that we've all been talking about, both at the local level and, and across the country, um, the infrastructure, the aging infrastructure across the country, we've all talked about that here. Um, and with that concern of lack of water, the, the, um, fine-tuning and, and understanding how much water is being lost every day through cracked pipes and, and all of this, and really being accountable for all that water that gets lost, and so it's not being dislodged. Um, the other big issue across the country is new regulations and, in terms of testing water, and, and so that's been a big issue, asset management, and of course, water rights. Um, I attended the Public Officials Con, Ca, Caucus, excuse me, um, which, um, was local, um, officials from all over the United States, um, talking about issues that I just mentioned. Um, and, and those were all issues that are common, you know, to pretty much everyone. I was, it was kind of funny, I was sitting, I've, over the couple of years that I've gone to this conference, um, I've got to meet people from across the country, and, um, Michael Victor, Victorino, Michael Victorino, um, he's the Presiding Officer Pro Tempore of, um, the county of Maui, and, um, he is the coolest guy. Um, and he's sitting there, and he's like, "Well, we don't have any of these issues. The, you know, whatever rain falls on my island, we get that water, and we don't have to, we don't have to worry about where it goes." It's, you know, so it was kind of interesting to hear his, he was like one of the only people, you know, to not have to worry about some of these other issues. Um, so that was a great experience, um, and learned a lot, and, um, there, the several of the speakers that were there at the, the Public Officials Caucus were, um, the mayor of, um, the city of Livermore, California, John Marshon. He, he has been, um, as a, as an employee in, in, in the water for thirty, forty years, and then ran for public office in, in the city commission there, and then became mayor, and so he was able to take some of his background knowledge of water and, and bring that to the city level. Um, we had, um, a presentation, um, from the American Waterworks Association Water Loss Control Committee, and they talked about all those issues, and then, um, Tom Curtis, who is Government Affairs from American Water Watch, talked about some of the issues from Washington, DC, that they're working on, and WIFIA, which is, um, the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act, which is allowing, um, communities all across the United States to get low-interest construction loans or, or loans for, um, infrastructure in the, in communities, and so that's a big thing that's happening. Um, anyway, that was amazing, and, um, flew home, was home for a day to post my students' grades, [laughing], at Oregon City High School, and then I flew, um, with the, um, high school choir, um, as a chaperone, to, uh, Florida, where we boarded, um, the Carnival Sensation for a four-day cruise to the Bahamas, where the students sang at...
You go a cruise?
And to...
No, city didn't pay for this.
No, this is not a city.
Let's just be clear about that.
And the school district didn't pay for this either. I paid for this myself, but I was a chaperone with the school to that. Um, they sang in two different cities in Bahamas, um, they sang on the ship, um, they were, uh, then we came back, um, they, um, were working with the Disney Performing Arts and performed in, uh, Downtown Disney, at Disney World. Um, it was incredible, and I, I just want to mention that because the, um, I've been a chaperone with, um, this group for quite a while. Um, one of my good, my good friend at the high school, Amy Ahmet, who is an amazing choir director, our fine arts departments at the high school have never been at the level that they are now, um, in terms of band, music, and art. Um, she is actually going to be stepping down this year, um, but she is a good friend, and, and what she has done with that program, I think is absolutely incredible, and those kids, um, taking them out of the country and all the trips that we've been, and various places, are such an incredible, um, advocates and, and, um, uh, role models, and just, um, good representatives of our city and our state, and, um, I, I just, um, you know, I think there's, some of that stuff will hopefully be posted on the, the school website. Took a ton of pictures, the, the news media in the Bahamas was all over their, their, um, performances, and, and it was interesting, even on the, the cruise ship, you would, you would, they would do impromptu kind of performances at various points, just if they, if someone said, "Hey, oh, your choir sings a song," and then they would do it. Um, and then, you know, they would pick up this fan base, um, where people would say, "Oh, well, you're performing at three o'clock on Wednesday on the ship," and then they would be there. Um, these people would be there, and, um, just being able to see these students go out into the community and attract this following of, of people who not only were impressed by their incredible talent, but just finally, you know, just, just relieved and happy to see students and how good they are and how incredible they are, uh, and just talk about it, and it's, it's fun to be a part of that and hear that from them, uh, because it's some of the things that, you know, that we don't always hear all the time, and it's, uh, it's great to be a part of that. So, um, I wanted to share that, and I think that's it. I flew home last night. I stayed a little bit extra. I have family in Florida, so the last little few days, I stayed there myself with no students. Um, but I came home last night, and I'm ready, I missed Oregon City. Um, I actually did. People asked me, "Yeah, I did." [laughing] I love this town, so I'm glad to be back, and here we are at the city commission meeting, ready to go.
Okay.
How, how much was that?
Fourteen minutes, but...
But it's only, it's not...
Not that I would tell you.
It's fourteen minutes. Well, it's not even eight o'clock, so shut up.
Excuse me, Mayor?
I think that's a, a little harsh.
I don't think so.
If I could, one of our, one of our staff has a teenage son and happened to know that there is that app, and it's called, this is the Drive Mode app that prevents texting while driving over fifteen miles per hour, so.
There you go.
It's out there.
Does it prevent receiving or making phone calls?
I do not know that, but...
That would be interesting to know.
There is a link, and we might even put it on our website tomorrow.
Yeah.
Is there one that shuts your phone off when you're in the city?
What's the name of the app again?
Drive Mode App.
Drive Mode App.
Yeah, I got that coming up.
I know I do.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's my turn. Um, I'll try to be a little more brief. Um, about the only thing I've done since our last meeting was I was, had the honor of attending the United States Conference of Mayors in San Francisco. Um, I did get to present the, uh, the, uh, map to, to Mayor Lee, and surprisingly, um, he had no clue about, about the history and, and any of that, so they were really excited to get that, and he said he's going to put it in his office, and...
That is cool.
I can't believe they didn't know.
I'm sure some staffers did, but apparently the mayor had not been briefed.
Some little town in Oregon has some, you know, be, it impact on their history, then of course they don't know.
We know our history, so.
He was surprised to learn that Oregon City is the oldest incorporated city west of the Rocky Mountains, so.
Now he knows.
Although I say that everywhere I go. I did attend, during the conference, I attended the, the mayors and police chiefs conference, and we had some, some good discussion there. And I was relieved to find that unlike many cities across the United States, Oregon City does not have the same kinds of issues with trust and, and accountability with our police department. And many mayors were frankly shocked to hear me say that, but I think we have one of the finest, one of the finest forces there is around, and, and so I let those folks know that. And this was kind of an interesting time, because President Barack Obama came and spoke, Hillary Clinton came and spoke, and who's the other Democrat that's running, Governor of?
Martin O'Malley.
Huh? Martin O'Malley was there, but I was leaving on, I left Sunday afternoon, and so he was there, and I just got a chance to sit down with him for 10 or 15 minutes and just have a one-on-one chat with him, which was, which was kind of fun. But one of the very best speakers that we had there was Sal Khan from the Khan Academies. And he, he spoke, and, and he, he wore one of those headsets, and he, he knows his stuff, was not using a teleprompter, took some, some questions from the audience, and was able to fire off answers, and is a very smart guy, and has a, a program that I'm going to talk with, with Larry Didway about, that is sort of a, a programming club for kids.
Yeah, my son does that. Yeah, they do Khan Academy. It's great.
Yeah, so that, that was exciting. And then one of the evening things that we did that was really cool, and I'm going to have Katie give us a, a five-minute deal on it in our next commission meeting, but it was the 100-year anniversary of San Francisco City Hall. And so they had this big gala event there, and, and they brought us all in on these black buses with four police car, motorcycle escorts for every bus and the whole deal, you know, you roll up in the red carpet and all that. But at the very end of the evening, they brought us all back outside, and they had this amazing light show by Philips that was projected from three blocks away on two sides, and then they had stuff set up all over, you know, the outside. But it's a, it's about a 10-minute show, but the second half is not so exciting, but we'll show the first, the first half of it, because it's, it's really cool, and it was a lot of fun. I got to meet a lot of mayors from a lot of different places, made some really good friends with, with mayors in New Mexico, and Washington, and Pennsylvania, and all over the place. And some of them had the same issues we have, some of them have different issues. But it's going to be good to be getting out there and, and having those discussions, because when we have something happen here, you have people to reach out to, to talk to that in your, you know, in your same boat. And sometimes, if you can talk, talk to somebody who's three states away, you can say things to them that I can't say to Lou Ogden or Charlie Hayles, or something like that, so. I did want to make a couple of appointments tonight. Commissioner Mangelberg has accepted Oregon City's position on impact, and she will be the alternate to C4, and she's going to attend the morning C4 Metro Cities Subcommittee. And then I've had numerous conversations, phone calls, meetings about the whole Tri-City Sewer District thing. I've probably spent, I don't know, five or six hours on the phone with David and, and other people. And we are continuing to work that problem, and are working with our newfound friends in Gladstone, and are making contacts with city managers and mayors and, and city councilors from the other cities in the region to make sure that not only do they understand what Oregon City's position is, but that we aren't out to shut down the regional system. We just need to have some control over what happens to stuff in our city, and, and frankly, to be in charge of our own ratepayers, because we are directly elected folks. And when none of the five county commissioners lives inside the Tri-City Sewer District and they're raising rates, they aren't raising the rates on themselves. So there's a real disconnect there in our democratic form of government if you aren't, if you're doing that sort of thing. I, I kind of recall this document called the Declaration of Independence that was talking about those kinds of issues. So the last thing for me is, please, everybody, be careful this weekend. I know my yard, which is almost an acre, is dry as dry can be, and it wouldn't take much more than a cigarette not put out to get something started. So you can imagine what it would be if you dropped a sparkler, or a mortar, or a Roman candle. This is, years ago, I went to the National Fire Protection Association Conference, and one of the classes I attended was the urban wildland interface. And amazingly enough, we have a lot of that here. So all you have to do is go out to the edge of the city limits at Beaver Creek, or up in Park Place, or in South End. And we don't transition slowly over a long period of time. It literally goes from urban to field, farm fields, like that. So a misplaced firework somewhere that isn't immediately attended to could literally take out 100 homes. So once again, I just encourage everybody out there, be careful, follow the rules, and try to keep everybody safe this weekend.
Absolutely.
So is there anything else for the good of the order?